Let's call the regular board meeting. Silver Falls School District order. Would everybody please join me at the flagpole? Oh, two attendance, okay. Now, flags away.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. I was a little out of order there, but Debbie, Debbie got attendance, right?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, first item is our consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
It's all moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that takes care of those hires. But we'd like to introduce Dan Bush, our new Assistant Superintendent. If he'd like to come up and introduce himself for a minute or so.
Right here?
Yes, please.
All right.
Get used to it.
Well, good evening, board members. Superintendent Belando, I appreciate being here this evening, and I'm honored to accept the position of Assistant Superintendent. A great deal of thanks to Andy and his team for selecting me. As I went through the process, one question that I was able to ask during the interview process is, why would I want to join the Silver Falls School District? And there was a lot of commitment to community. There was a lot of sense of students here in your school district having a really strong sense of identity and who they were. And that's kind of where I've come from. In my experience, I grew up in the St. Helen Scappus area, so similar size. My wife Sandra is here. We've raised our three kids in Newburgh, so again, similar kind of size. I'm coming to you from the Tiger Twalton School District, a little bit bigger size, but I'm happy to join a community and focus on students. The last thing I'd like to say is that as I've talked to people through the last week or so, as I've moved through this process, I've used the expression that I am the, going to be the Assistant Superintendent for the Silver Falls School District. And a key word in that sentence for me is the word "for." It's a lot different than saying "of" the Silver Falls School District, because when I say the word "for," that means I'm for this community, I'm for its teachers, I'm for its students. I think it implies an attitude or a perspective of service, and that's what I've tried to do for the last 25 years in education, is be for kids and work for people. So that's what I hope to bring to your school district, and I'm really excited to join it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome to our district.
Dan and Susan.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, next up is our student representatives, Larissa Kesch and Olivia Myers.
Good evening. I hope you all have been enjoying the sun as much as we have. The school year may be coming to an end, but Silverton High School is still working hard on our sports, clubs, and activities.
First, let's start off with the sports. Baseball. Baseball has a league record of 13, 10, and 3. Their next home game is Wednesday, the 15th, at 5:00 p.m. versus North Salem.
The boys tennis team has two players going to state. The girls team also has two players going to state, which is this weekend.
Softballs. Softball has a league record of 1 and 12. Their next home game is Tuesday, the 14th, at 5:00 p.m. versus Crescent Valley.
Track and Field has their district meet this Wednesday and Thursday in Lebanon.
Let's go on to clubs and activities. Band. The Win Ensemble got 7th in state last week. The Jazz Band is going to state this Saturday. The band also has an exciting new project coming up. Dr. Eric Funk, composer and professor of music at Montana State University, has offered to compose a piece for the Silverton Win Ensemble. The work's inspiration is Silver Falls. SHS band students will be involved throughout the composition process and will collaborate with Dr. Funk through Skype and face-to-face visits. A premier concert at Silver Falls is in the works for spring of 2020.
The Key Club is helping with Bike Fair and Pet Parade this May.
Interact Club is focusing on volunteer work. They plan to spread bark dust around the school for graduation and send volunteers to clean up after prom.
The Red Cross Club has a blood drive on May 23rd. It's the third drive of the year, and the club will be collecting more than 100 units.
On May 2nd, the Los Aguilas Club shared chips and salsa with all the students in celebration of the Cinco de Mayo on May 3rd. On May 3rd, the Los Aguilas Club participated in the 2019 Caesar Chavez Leadership Conference. One of the seniors in the club was awarded with a scholarship at the conference.
Skills USA is getting ready to go to nationals. They have four high school students attending and will compete June 24th through 29th in Lewisville, Kentucky. They're working to raise money with fundraisers such as Firefighter Per Day, Donai at Domino's, and are working to get a Dutch Bros Day as well.
Concert Choir earned first place at the OSA 5A Choir for the second year in a row.
The Robotics Club has been working on underwater robots in class.
FBLA has 15 members competing at the National Leadership Conference in San Antonio, Texas, June 27th through July 3rd.
Speech and Debate has their Spektacular End of the Year Showcase on Tuesday, the 28th of May, at 6:00 p.m. at the SHS Auditorium. This event will help them raise funds to send the national qualifiers to Texas in June.
The Theater Department has their Spring One Act coming up. They are performing four musical numbers, including teasers for next year's musical, Into the Woods, as well as Radium Girls, a historical drama about women who fought for what they believed in even as they suffered for radium poisoning and postcards from Shakespeare, a comedy imagining of what happened when Shakespeare had writer's block. One Acts are May 16, 17, 18, and all at 7:00 p.m.
Last Thursday, ASB, along with many students, organized a multicultural food celebration. This event celebrated diversity at Silverton High School and was very successful.
Prom took place over the weekend. The theme was rustic romance, and there was a characteristic artist, a photo booth, and of course, lots of dancing. It was a fun-filled night for all.
This is our last meeting that the student representatives will be attending, and I would just like to say that we have really enjoyed informing you about the happenings at Silverton High School. Thank you so much for your time, and have a lovely summer.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good summer.
Okay, next up is our public comment period. We've got two groups that want to speak, so we're going to invite them to come up first. So first up is the Silverton Friends of Music. They're going to talk about their report.
Mr. Chairman, do you have the script for public comment?
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Andy. Okay, here we go. Let me read this while you guys are getting situated. "We are glad you are here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group, or three or more, wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for seven minutes." A second public comment will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of this meeting. All right, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. And I think we all signed in in the back, right? I'm Sarah Weitzman. I'm president of Silverton Friends of Music.
I'm John Feranza, treasurer.
Laney Piper, VP of Hospitality.
Denise Pyskowski, Secretary.
Heidi Sanchez, VP of Fundraising.
Does this come through in the back? Is it, you guys all here in the back? Also, we have lots of supporters in the room. If you could raise your hand if you're here to support Silverton Friends of Music, that would be great. Thanks. Thank you. In April, Silverton Friends of Music hired Dr. John Benham, a consultant and author, with over 40 years of experience in music education. He worked with over 400 schools, he has worked with over 400 school districts in the United States and Canada, including several here in Oregon, to build, save, and restore school music programs. We are here tonight to present to you the highlights from Dr. Benham's report on the status of music in Silver Falls School District. We are pleased to see positive movement forward and looking at ways to bring music to our students, as presented in the add-back at the Budget Committee on May 2nd. However, we're still concerned about how an after-school music program will provide music to all of our students. And it is still unknown per the budget, at the Budget Committee if that money will be funded, but yay for the stuff that happened at the state today. We wanted to let the board and administration know that we hired Dr. Benham with the hope of creating further collaboration and working together. His specialty is often as a mediator or facilitator to allow groups like ours and the district work closer together on an end goal of bringing back music where music had been cut, and also offering it to all as a part of an equitable, well-rounded education, as defined by the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, which was signed into law in 2015. We had really hoped and thought that the district would participate with us and would welcome his experience. We appreciated his thoughtfulness in always reminding us that we should be making student-centered decisions and not get lost in adult-centered decisions. We also wanted to say thank you to the board members, the three of you who are present at Dr. Benham's public forum in April.
So to start with, we just wanted to share some of the points from the executive summary that's contained within Dr. Benham's report. The first thing is that participation in music performance is a major factor in student success to the extent that it's endorsed as a basic core education desired for all students in all grades. Historical reductions in the Silver Falls School District music program has resulted in declining enrollment in band. These reductions have had a major negative cumulative impact on class sizes. Some faculty issues identified by Dr. Benham include staffing allocations per school within the Silver Falls School District are not sufficient to provide equal access to a music education. And rural schools in particular are deprived of opportunities for making music.
Some of our curriculum issues are the following. The district has no clear definition of the distinction between the music curriculum as curricular, co-curricular, or extracurricular. There is no music curriculum. However, the district has adopted the Oregon State Standards for Music Education. The district has suggested an integrated strategy for implementing music in all schools that will not be capable of meeting state performance standards other than meeting the time requirements. It is suggested that general music classroom teachers will provide music instruction, however, there's no conceivable way in which they will be able to provide this instruction that will meet the state content standards, assuming they will be willing to add that to their loads. There is clear evidence that all students do not have equal access to music education in all areas of the curriculum. This could become a significant legal issue for our district. Site management schools do not remove the responsibility of the district to provide access to music education. And music participation is a key element in the success of all students, particularly those considered at risk. Music can be a key component in closing the achievement gap.
And some student participation issues. There is no consistent elementary or middle school music program. Opportunities for students to make music in choir or band are minimal at best in grades K through 8. Enrollments in band and choir at the high school are very low, due primarily to the lack of a foundational music curriculum in grades K through 5, the lack of adequate opportunities to participate in band and choir in grades 6 through 8. And the loss of student enrollment in band in grades 6 through 8 demonstrates the loss of the grade 5 band program. Enrollment has dropped by 71%. Enrollment decline in band in grades 5 through 8 demonstrate the probable complete collapse of a high band program within the next three years. Equal access is a major inhibitor to student participation. Pull-out strategies for grade 5 band should be considered for implementation.
Some economic issues that relate to teacher load and FTE and class sizes. Average class sizes for music performance ensembles should be approximately 40 to 45 students, with maximum average teacher loads at 200 students compared to loads of 125 to 175 students for classroom teachers, depending on how many classes they teach. The excess student load carried by music performance teachers generally equates to an FTE value of 1.2 to 1.6 classroom teachers. If a full music curriculum was implemented/restated, it may be anticipated that choir enrollments would more than double and band enrollments would more than triple based on similarly sized districts.
So in conclusion, it is with careful consideration that we request the formation of a task force to study these and other identified issues and make recommendations regarding the structure of the music curriculum so as to provide SFSD students with their highest potential achievement. We recommend that the constituency of the task force include balanced represented, I can't talk, balanced representation of administration, teachers, both general and music, and community members. We ask that this task force start before any formulated after-school programs are put to place, and we hope that you will thoughtfully consider this task force, support the task force, and also, we're very thankful for your time and hope that you can glean some relevant information from what Dr. Benham was able to present. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, a couple folks want to talk about the vaccination law that might have been, it might have been shut down. You guys probably heard about that.
Yes, we did get news.
Good. Set your name, or sign in and state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Ahen. I am a parent of two students at Butte Creek School and another one starting in fall. So she's super excited, she can't wait. So we did get news of the vaccine possibly being killed. So I'm just going to continue with my presentation like we had planned earlier, and hopes that it did, you know, die. And in case it didn't, I'll start with my presentation. Good evening, committee members. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our concerns today. We contemplated not coming to this meeting after hearing House Bill 3063 has been killed at the Senate floor. However, this isn't final until the legislative session closes. We are here representing a large community of concerned parents in the Silver Falls School District. We ask for your help in continuing to oppose mandated vaccines in the state of Oregon. We are concerned about the effects this bill would have had, not only for our families, but also for your classrooms throughout the district. Here are the common concerns this bill is being opposed by Oregonians. It's unconstitutional. This bill would have removed all religious and philosophical exemptions currently in place protecting our children. This violates our medical freedom by removing our rights as parents to make medical decisions for our children if we want our children to continue to get the public education that we pay for in taxes. If a parent missed even one booster shot, their child will not be allowed on school grounds. Medical exemptions would be the only exemptions left in the state, but can only be approved by the Oregon Health Authority. This is dangerous because it disregards family history, disability, physician recommendations, medical conditions, religious beliefs, and personal choice. There is no guidelines for a child with a disability, therefore, this bill discriminates against children with disabilities. This bill disregards our religious beliefs by taking away our children's public education, violating our religious freedoms, the very freedom our grandparents immigrated for in the 1960s, the very freedom your school district is teaching our children in history books, that the United States of America is free and that our rights would never be violated. No options for public, private, or online school. Even daycares would not be allowed to accept our children because we, as parents, would exercise our religious right to not vaccinate our children. This will have a huge impact on household income. Two-income families will turn to one due to the fact that one parent will have to quit their job in order to homeschool our children. Can you imagine the effects this would have on the community with more single-income families? The way that this bill would have affected the Silver Falls School District is loss of students in schools, about 175 to 455 students district-wide. And that includes children from the old believer community that choose religious exemption, and then the philosophical exemptions of non-Russian families. So loss of money going to the school budget due to loss of students. Silver Falls School District stands to lose anywhere from $1.8 million to $4.8 million. And then also, there would be loss of diversity in classrooms, children being separated from their classmates and schoolteachers, loss of valuable opportunities in the classroom for our children. Segregation. This bill does not allow unvaccinated and vaccinated children to be in the same location. We are concerned about our children being segregated and discriminated in after-school programs or field trips. How does, how would Silver Falls condone or even enforce such behavior? Currently, Oregon has above-average herd immunity thresholds for all communicable diseases, especially measles, and actually, a very low percentage of families are completely unvaccinated. In Marion County, about 95.4% are all vaccinated. Measles, 97% are vaccinated. Is it worth losing so much school funding and students for only 3% to 5% of the population? So this isn't an anti- or pro-vaccine issue. This is about our rights as American citizens fighting for freedom of religion, medical choice, and school choice. Parents need to be the ones to raise their children and make decisions that they think are best for their children, not the government. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my concerns today.
Yeah? I said, thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Maria Santoroff, and I also have students in the school district. I have two children at Butte Creek and one child at Silverton High School. And I just wanted to add that in reading the Oregon State's Education Board policy, I think this bill would have violated that policy directly. That policy says that no discrimination or harassment on the grounds of race, color, sex, marital status, religion, national origin, age, sexual orientation, or disability in any educational programs, activities, or employment. In that, I think there'd be, and then from that, we've been reported to that there's been incidents happening in schools, at least two, against our children in our community. And these are the type of statements that they're reporting. One student said that a non-Russian student said to her, "It's a good thing when this bill passes, because then all the Russian pigs will get kicked out of school." Sorry. Another even more egregious comment by a group of kids was that all non-vaxxed Russian kids should be lined up and shot. The legislators pushing this bill aren't setting a better example. One legislator went so far as to call concerned parents from the Slavic and Russian communities Russian trolls. Unbelievable and despicable words bordering on hate speech. This is the kind of harassment members from our community and others would face should this bill pass. In particular, my Russian community, old believers, would certainly face this kind of harassment and ostracization because we are easily spotted due to how we dress. Or are we, or are we to surrender those freedoms as well? Where does it stop? This begins to be reminiscent of the tyranny our ancestors fled to this land through legal and proper immigration for freedom and individual rights and choices. Perhaps individual and herd immunities need to increase in the state and in our local communities, but there needs to be a more compassionate way to accomplish that, not in this rushed frantic path that holds innocent kids' educations for ransom and upheavals the lives of tens of thousands of kids across the state and their families, especially considering the recent measles outbreak didn't even originate or occur in schools or kids. Please, regardless of the results of today's Senate vote, we urge you to contact our senators and ask them to never again attempt such a harsh and poorly thought-out version of this bill, as it's highly likely to return again in future legislative sessions. We are lucky to live in a modern world with many brilliant and clever people, and we can figure out a way that is more compassionate, all-inclusive, and provides an educational path forward for all Oregon kids.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, now it's open up. Would anybody else like to come address the board?
Hello, my name is Nassim Raka, and I live on Telecom Road in Silverton. I've already signed in back there. Is that good enough?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to just read something. Earlier today, a jury in California concluded that Monsanto's Roundup, which I know we're all familiar with, caused an elderly couple to suffer non-Hodgkin's lymphoma after years of using the herbicide. The jury awarded Alberta and Alvard Piliad a combined total of $2 billion, with a B, dollars. Today's verdict in Piliad versus Monsanto was the third consecutive loss suffered by Monsanto. All three juries found that glyphosate-based Roundup can cause cancer, and that Monsanto covered up that fact. 13,000 more suits are pending. Last month, at last month's Budget Committee, Superintendent Andy Belando indicated Roundup was part of the district's Integrated Pest Management Plan. Oregon law requires all Oregon school districts to have an Integrated Pest Management Law, but not all districts include the spraying of harmful chemicals in their toolbox. In fact, according to OSU's Model Integrated Pest Management Plan for Oregon schools, quote, pesticides and herbicides should be used rarely and only when absolutely necessary. At our budget meeting, we learned that the district plans to spend $30,000 on groundskeeping in the coming year. Yet, when asked by a Budget Committee member, district administrators could not tell the Budget Committee member how much of that money was going to chemicals and their application, nor did the district appear to know how much has been spent on these products and their use in the past, nor when or where they have been used. According to ORS 634.700, the district must, quote, "provide parents, students, and staff written notice of any pesticide or herbicide application 24 hours prior to spraying. In addition, warning signs must be posted. This is for obvious reasons. Our children play on school grounds. They picnic on them. They lay on them. Our kids crawl on them, and community members bring their dogs for walks all over our school grounds." Have these people been notified that the grass they are sitting on or playing on has recently been sprayed? Sadly, Alvin Pillad and the plaintiff in today's verdict against Monsanto believes that at least part of his exposure to Roundup came from his job as a groundskeeper for a school in California. Let our district be the one that takes the important step to stop the use of Roundup and other carcinogens on our school grounds and campuses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to address the board? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Andy's got a roster for some long, for the 2019 and '20 District Long Range Facility Planning Committee. Does anything you need to add to Andy, or any comment?
No, each of these individuals have confirmed their interests. I will share with you briefly as well, Mr. Chairman, just so you can see the representation that we have around the district. We have so many people in our school district that it's, I think it's real important that we have representation from each area, so you know that each one of the interested committee members are representative of school areas, and with one per school area. We have two representatives at, from Silverton High School, and we also have five representatives at large in the entire district. I'm sorry, I really want to show you this. And so, as you can imagine, it could be a challenge to try to find representation from throughout the district, but we're, I'm pleased to be able to say that we have, we have folks who have stepped up and have an interest. So we have, again, keeping in mind that our school district spans across two counties and about 250 square miles, it's pretty important to have this representation. So we have about half of the committee members that represent in-town geographic areas, and the other half, it's coming up, I swear it is, there you go, and the other half representing our rural community. and the other half representing our rural communities. And if you recall, that about 50% of our student enrollment is from in-town, in the city of Silverton, and about 50% is from the rural areas. So, if you take a look at this individual out in Clackamas County, and if I were to give you a rough outline of our school district, it's, it's something like this. You can tend to see where the hand is, is moving clear around the park and clear up into Clackamas County. So, there's a representation, each of the individuals have shown an interest and have indicated an interest. I've asked you as the board to take action on this tonight simply because this is a board committee. This will be a, and follow all public meeting procedural rules as we get into it. The intent is to have one meeting this spring, is more of an organizational meeting, hand out some documents related to previous facility planning efforts, and also give some direction and charge to the committee. And then, the committee is, is, should meet monthly, beginning next fall, October, possibly September, but October with certainty, each month throughout the year with your facility consultant, very likely an architect or engineer that will run this for you. So, there you go. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I have some questions.
Sure.
How did you go about finding all the people that are on the committee?
We put out an interest through you as school board members and asked you to submit names, also asked each of the principals to submit names from their geographic area.
Great.
And we had, I think around, it was 15, 16 people here. I think we had around 30 or 35 names that were considered for this list.
Okay. So, it's been brought to my attention by several people in our community that there are several people on this list that are always, always on a committee that is developed when there is a committee that needs to be one. Like, for example, Aaron Cook, he's been on the Strategic Vision Committee. He's on the Budget Committee, and now he's been picked to be on the planning, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee. And I think Katie Gardner is another one. Wally Lerman, he was a former board member, of course, but he was on the Policy Overhaul Committee even when he wasn't a board member. And I think he's been on a couple of other committees, but you can correct me if I'm wrong. So, I guess I, I mean, it, I, there's, and I think that the perception is that it's, you know, the same people are being recycled to be on committees. And I just wanted to address that from the, the community members that, that called me and pointed that out. So, I don't, I'd like to know if you have a running list of other people that are available for committees?
I have no other names. Many of these names were the second and third choice because people weren't interested, including a couple of names that you mentioned. So, this is entirely a board committee.
Correct.
Shelley, it's really entirely up to the board to make a determination. If there are people that you don't want on this committee, then I suggest you have a conversation with the board members and be able to give me some direction with that.
Well, that's true, and I will, but you're a part of putting this committee together, so I wanted to talk to you about it.
Absolutely.
Right now. And I wanted to get your perspective on it before I discussed it with the board members.
Sure.
So, we're kind of working as a group here. So, that's what I wanted to clear up. And I thank you for your answers. So, I'd like to talk to the board members then.
Ms. Chairman, anything else?
Yeah, well, I mean, how many, I guess, how many people on this committee have never been on a committee before?
I couldn't say with certainty. I, 2/3 of them anyway.
Okay. That's kind of, yeah.
Sure.
And Tom, I have a question about, do we have policy about this committee?
Not that I know of. Andy, do you know of any?
Yeah, you do have a policy about committees. That policy pretty much says that if it's a board-appointed committee, then you're to follow public meeting laws. Generally, that we notice the meeting, we take, keep agendas for the meeting, we publish the minutes for the meeting. That's pretty much what the policy says.
You know, and Andy, I do want to make maybe a statement. I kind of take a little bit different approach from my fellow board member here is, you know, oftentimes in our community, we have a lot of apathy, people don't want to get involved. So, when we're building committees, it's hard to locate people that do want to spend time outside, and they've got jobs and they've got families. So, the fact that we have people that continue to donate their time, and they want to be part of the committee and part of the community, I think that's fantastic.
Agreed.
You know, it's fantastic. And like our brand-new Assistant Superintendent said, they want to be for the community. That's a strong word, right?
Yeah.
And I really, I'm sorry to say this, but I think it's an ignorant statement to say to classify them as recycled. That's a statement born in ignorance. These are not recycled people. These are people that care deeply for the community. So, as a board member, when you're speaking on behalf of the board, use your words carefully, because these are not recycled people. These are valued people of our community.
I'm just using words that community members wanted me to share as a board member, and that is my job here is to make that public, to have a discussion.
But you can have a filter. You can have a filter.
You're right, but you know what? That's, that's what I'm here for. So, I'm starting a discussion, and what I'd like to mention is, I know that there are plenty of other people who would like to be on a committee to work for our district. I had recommended several for the Assistant Superintendent Committee, and I do know some community members that sent emails to our superintendent, not only volunteering, people who had, who had stepped up but who had never been on a committee before, who are really qualified to be on the committee. So, that's what I just wanted to share because my job here is to take that information from the community and bring it here to let the board members know and share what their concerns are, you know, in conjunction with the, the committee names.
Sure.
So, that's all I'm doing. So, I would appreciate you not calling me names of any kind or, you know, using language that can be divisive. I simply just want to have a conversation with our board members. That's it. And I wanted to have, I just wanted to make sure that Andy, I wanted to ask Andy his approach, because he, you know, he has a process. And I wanted to make sure that it was understood in public what the process was. That way, the, the community members who did ask me or who did approach me about, um, community members who wanted down the committee could understand the process. And I like to do that in public so everyone knows. I think it's healthy and proactive. So, we'd like to get your opinion.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are on, you need to say any.
Yeah, no, I don't totally disagree with everything that Shelley said, but when we're bringing up community members that are participating and that want to participate, when we use the term recycled, I think that's fairly condescending. And I think we need to be careful as elected board officials that even if the community has maybe concerns, that when we share them, we have to filter and make sure that is dominated professionally.
I think, I think you both made your, made your, made your points known.
Could you control the audience, please?
Yeah. Yeah, guys, please, no outbursts from the audiences, please. Please, no outbursts, please. Thank you. Would anybody else like to?
Yeah, I get the, I, I understand what she said, Shelley, but, but at the same time, I look at this list and I see three people who have been on other things before. I don't, a lot of these names, I, I know, I know the names, but as far as I know, they've never been on a committee, on a district committee. They're, a lot of them I see are very involved in their local schools. They know, they know their schools, a lot, especially the rural schools and the in-town schools, they're very involved in their schools. And I know there, sometimes there's a push for people to, saying that people have been too involved or on too many things, but along with that comes a great historical perspective on a, on a facilities committee like this, where we're coming from. So, some of these, you know, a couple of these people, sure, they've been involved in stuff, but they have a, they could, they're going to bring a huge historical perspective to this committee, which is very important when you're talking facilities. So, I, I mean, I respectfully, I just don't think there's an issue as far as I'm concerned.
We may not disagree, you can just give me good points, which that was a very good point that wasn't thought of. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else having input?
I'll just, I'll just mention, you know, I, I don't know a lot of these folks, the ones that are kind of out in the area that I have lived in, were up in, Ellen Ploss and Stephanie Cole, I think are great choices, so I'll just say that.
I recommended a couple, three people on this list. And so, again, also, I, I think that they're great. I don't know everybody. It sounds like we didn't, we followed the policy. Somebody did contact me and was concerned about gender balance. It's 10 to 7. And that's something that I think we could probably keep in mind moving forward, but I can support the list as is.
Very good point. We did, we did attempt to get 50/50 representation, and we found that to be rather challenging, but we should consider changes to that if the board would like.
Thank you.
No, I think, I think it looks good. I like, I, that's why I've been, Shelley's point, but I brought the question, but that's why I said question, how many new folks are on there? And you, I like Tim, I completely agree with Tim. You want, you want some experienced folks who, who have seen, who have seen this, who have seen the process over and over, and they can get a lot of, a lot of historical perspective. So, it seemed like a good list to me, you know, good balance of experience and lots of new folks.
Well, I want to thank you for the proactive responses and information shared that, you know, we can feel good going forward with this, with this committee. So, thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Okay, next up is policy, let's have a, have a discussion on policy BDDH, the public comment at board meetings. We had, we had a lot, a couple of board members want to talk about it. Was it the last meeting? I can't remember. I wasn't here. Tim, Tim had the chair, and we, and he asked that we limit any musical performances. Tim, do I jump in if, if I got that wrong?
I just, I just asked that if people want to do a music performance at a board meeting, that they contact the district office ahead of time?
Okay.
That's, I didn't, if, there was nothing about limiting them, there was nothing about hating music? It's surprising what some people will accuse you of when they disagree with you. But it's nothing about hating music. It's nothing about this board trying to limit free expression. It's just, was just a suggestion that if somebody wants to do a musical performance, which in my opinion is a little bit out of, a little bit out of the realm of what our public comment period is for, then I just wanted to, you know, request, ask that they contact administration or the board chair ahead of time.
So, I was one of the ones that had asked to bring it up, mostly because it, I just was surprised by it, right? So, we, I think it had some conversations, but there was certainly nothing in my mind that was concrete. And I think that having this conversation in this public forum would have been useful ahead of the statement so that there wasn't surprise and backlash after reading it. That's, so that's, from my perspective, I think if we had that dialogue upfront, probably could have curbed some of that. I'm not necessarily opposed to the request for people to request in advance if there's something they know they want to do, and typically, if you're going to perform something, you know ahead of time, it's not impromptu, right? So, I'm not opposed to the idea. I just think we could have been better about how we implemented it, maybe is what I'm trying to say. So, I want to make sure we talked about it and that we were all in agreement with how we wanted to proceed.
I'm, I'm fine with the comments the way they always have been. Three minutes, is that the limit? So, but I think that if it's three minutes, it's three minutes, you know? If it's a song, it's hard to break in and say, "Sorry, your time is up."
It's hard to break in. We had, we had, we had two groups present, and we're supposed to give them five minutes, and I, I'm like, "They're doing great, I'm not going to shut them off." You guys, so, you know, it's hard, and, and the performance falls under that, so. And, and that's something, you know how long it's going to last. You can have your prepared statements, and you think it's going to take five minutes, it takes seven. But a song, you know how long a song's going to take. So, I, I, I agree with the request. I just, you know, I think of just a quick discussion before, you know?
Yeah.
It wouldn't hurt, so I would, yeah.
Totally reasonable.
Yep.
So, we should probably just have some clarification on what this looks like. You know, we've had students come and perform in front of us. We've had a cappella groups come. We've had different kinds of groups come and perform in front of us. So, that is an indicator of, okay, so, is it everybody, even the, you know, the, the teachers who want to bring students here, a cappella group, we know, does, is this an umbrella clarification that everyone should contact our superintendent beforehand and let us, let him know that they want to perform? So, we have to get our language right.
Well, I guess, I, I think the student performances you're referring to occur, occur during that school's assigned time. And they have, and they have contacted, you know, it's, it's, it's part of the agenda. It's, it's, you know, it's Buick Creek School or Seth Mills or Central House.
No, we've had students come here to perform.
Yeah, but I think that's been part of it, it's been part of an agenda. It wasn't, it wasn't a spontaneous one where we don't know what's coming up.
So, this is good, good clarification for our community. That way, we have the right language, and, and it's clear, you know, how we want to proceed forward. You know what I mean?
And it's kind of a great thing, because that's, it's, it's an interesting, it's a, it's a form of expression, so.
Right, so we, that's what we have to talk about.
And it's not, and it's not, it's not just the music thing. I mean, you know, as a board, sometimes we have to, I don't want to say control, but we have. No, I mean, what's to, say somebody, say, say somebody wants to have more science curriculum in the district?
Right.
And STEM curriculum, you know, more STEM curriculum. Can they come just kind of out of the blue and, you know, this is going to sound a little out there, but can they come and do a dissection for three minutes?
It's a science experiment, right?
So, I just think, I just think having, having some of these special interest type of things, quote-unquote, contact the district office ahead of time is a reasonable way to.
Yeah.
And I think that's great. That's, that's kind of out of the scope of our discussion though, isn't it? Like, we're talking about public comment, and public comment, we have a procedure, we have a policy.
Well, that's what our policy kind of states.
I guess I, my point is that we can't restrict people from going to the podium if they haven't contacted administration ahead of, well, that's in the board's or the chair's purview, I suppose. But, yeah, I get, I guess my point is that we're, is it even our, in, in our decision-making ability to change what Tom says or whoever's in that seat says? Because that didn't have, I mean, that, that wasn't something that the board had discussed. Is that something that the board needs to discuss, or is that something that the chair does?
Well, I think the chair has the authority to make that decision on his or her own before the meeting. However, depending on, you know, the chairperson, and, and Tom has been our chair for a couple of years now, his, his process is, he likes to discuss it with the whole board, which I think is really healthy and proactive. And so, that's, I think that's what we're used to when there's some kind of change in protocol. So, yeah.
Tom, is that?
I'm not quite sure, can you sum that up? Because I was trying to, I was trying to, you know, where?
I guess, what is, what is our purpose here? What are we doing?
Well, to decide, yeah, there we go. To decide if it was, I mean, where does a music performance fall into here?
I think it doesn't, to me, my, my.
Discretion.
Two, it stands especially after seeing the aftermath of the last meeting. There were a lot of people who were upset about the statement. I don't see the need to even mention music at all, just keep the, the three minutes is my, you know, like.
Well, no matter what they do, you're saying, is that what you're saying? No, no, I mean, which is fine, I'm just trying to make sure.
I think the chair has discretion, obviously, but I don't think that you can discriminate against one group just because they're singing when you give everybody else, you know, three minutes. So, I guess I just don't even think I need to, that I need to discuss that. And I think that, I agree.
So, 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 to clarify, can I, to maybe to restate what I think you said, a musical performance is the same as, as, as a. musical performance is the same as, as, as a, as a, as a statement or something?
Well, I don't think it's the same, but I don't think we can restrict it.
Well, there you go.
I don't think that's our job to restrict it.
Nobody's talking about restricting it. I just think it's.
I don't think Andy's going to tell you.
Can, can I try and end, Ms. Chairman? If I may, because I'd like to remind the board of a few things. First of all, you, I want to remind the board that, that you are a public board that meets in public. This is not a public forum, right? And, and that's coming directly from your policy. That's also coming from Renee Sessler of Oregon School Boards Association, who's had two or three trainings with you and reminded you that board meetings are meetings in public, they're not public meetings. With that said, your policy is written in such a way that it allows for public input, but if, if a board were to truly say, we're not going to allow public input, you could. I would never encourage, that, never recommend it, and I know you wouldn't as well. But that's the way the law is written in the state of Oregon. So with that said, public comment at board meetings can be as regulated as you as a board decide. You have policy BDDH, which refers to comments, opinions, compliments, things of that nature. You also have a script that Tom reads at the beginning of every meeting, which you as a board have reviewed every summer work session when you, when you discuss everything from the board superintendent working agreement to what some of your organizational principles are throughout the year. So as such, you've said, we're going to limit the discussion to three minutes. And I think, again, quoting Renee Sessler, your trainer from Oregon School Boards Association, who says the intent is for you to have a meeting, seven people in public, and have dialogue around things, whatever the things may be at that time, whatever the topics may be at that time. You provide opportunity for the, the public to give you input, but you can regulate that not only, the board chairman can regulate it, but not only the time, but you can regulate the number of people that speak, you can regulate the repetition. I've seen some board members in the past, maybe somebody comes up a second or third time to talk about the same topic. Renee Sessler would say it's okay to tell that person, do you have something new to share with us? Because again, your intent is at a meeting in public to hear, not necessarily for the same information over and over. Again, because Renee would said, that really doesn't contribute to the efficiency and the operation or the public interest of your meeting. So those are all reminders for you and BDDH does help explain a lot of that. You do have authority to control the type of presentations that you have at your, at your meetings.
Hey, Tom, can I make a comment real quick?
Go ahead, please.
And it seems like the event that kind of triggered this was during the discussion of music in schools, we had a men's choir that stood up to participate. And they sang a song, but there was no statement tying them to music in schools. So it was a brief performance. And typically what we've seen is a lot of families are bringing their children to perform for the board, to show the importance and what their children have learned in music. So I think where, when we had a men's choir break out in song without any kind of statement, it was almost one of the things where, well, how relevant was that to the discussion? So that would be my one question about that.
Yeah, and how do you know when the performance is, if it's, you, you learn that after the fact, after the performance?
Yeah.
And so I, I think, I, it's, it's a real difficult situation because you can't, I, I'm not for restricting anybody because if you, if you start saying, we're hearing a lot from one group, we're going to restrict, well, then you got to restrict everybody. And that's, you can't do that. You can't do that.
If I may, I mean, it feels like this is a solution in search of a problem, right? I don't, I don't think we had a problem. And so we, we made a change to address something that I'm not sure we had a majority agree we even had a problem, right? So that's all I'm saying, is I don't think that was the case. And it caught me off guard, I think as much as it caught some of the audience members off guard. I wasn't expecting the change. So I wasn't surprised when we got the feedback that we did.
Well, part of it, can I just say one more thing? Part of it too, and Andy touched on it, part of it too is the repetition. And when we, when we hear the same thing, and this happened, this happened back when we were, I remember when I was chairman and we were talking of discussing the Eugene Field closure and things like, you know, things like that. That was, that took quite a few months to get through. And we had, you know, we had some people coming and Grant, you know, Grant and Otto was the same people, but they would come and, you know, month after month after month and just keep telling us the same things that they did the last month. And so, you know, we, in order to, to kind of cut down on the repetition and to be more, a more efficient use of the, of our, of our time, we just start, you know, I started saying, do you have anything new for us tonight? You know, if you don't have anything new, then, we still didn't, I didn't, still didn't say you can't talk, but, you know, just kind of keep that in mind, do you have anything new for us? And so I think that's part of what, part of the thinking too, is just as an efficient use, more of efficient use of our time. So whether that's here or there.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe what we're searching for is a, a way to respectfully ask a group that's, that's presenting that we've, we've heard the message loud and clear, but we need to, we need other things to work on. How do we, I don't know how you do that, you know, but that's, I think is, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't, you know, I don't know, I think that's, I think that's, that's my ending statement, I think. I mean, I think, I know I've heard, I know I've heard the, the message loud and clear and I'm seeing, you know, we're letting things play out, but I, but, but at the same time, there's, there's other folks that want to present, that might want to have something to, to say and if we're, and, and if we got, you know, it's kind of part of our policy or a, a board agreement to try to get our meetings done by 10 o'clock. And if people are really, if we're getting, you know, tons of testimony, we, our meetings will go too long and it will kind of just crowd out other issues. That's, that's, that's a concern of mine.
So are we generally in agreement that the script that Tom usually reads is sufficient for right now?
Yeah, I am, I am. And, and I, and, yeah, and, and I think we're just having a good retroactive discussion. And I think, I think we're all in agreement.
I think we are, yeah.
And one more quick comment. You know, I do want to apologize to Shelley Nealon. Shelley, it was, you're right, it's a certain word when you mentioned recycled, I got a little bit triggered. And again, as a board member, I got to follow my own policy of what I share and what I say. So when I used the word ignorant, that was uncalled for, that was in poor taste, and that was my bad. So please forgive me, Shelley.
I appreciate it, I do. Thank you very much for the apology.
I mean, we got a lot of love, love on this floor.
There we go.
Thank you very much.
So I'm evolving every day as well. You can ask my wife, I make mistakes daily. Prasidhaya, Sioshtani.
Okay, move on. Okay. The district social, excuse me, the district social studies curriculum option. Andy?
Yeah, I have nothing new other than what was presented at Scotts Mills School a month ago and the curriculum is over there on the table for display. It's an action item later this evening.
It was, it was a great presentation. Does anybody have anything to, they'd like to add or talk about?
I just wanted to thank the committee who presented out at Scotts Mills, the Social Studies Committee. There were some dedicated people researching this and, you know, talked with, you know, the middle school and, you know, other teachers in the district and they all really worked hard together to, to move forward on a, on a new curriculum. And this is, when I researched it just a little bit more, this is, this is pretty exciting curriculum and this is moving us forward into some, some really good education in this department. So looking forward to them implementing that and thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your work on it.
Yes. Okay, and that'll be an action item later tonight. Okay, next up, the district energy efficiency lighting project. We got some financing for it. Andy, do you, you got some, some new information for us here on this?
Yeah, Lauren's here as well, if you have any specific questions for him. You received a document today that's literally as, as current as Friday, when we received the anticipated interest rate from the, from the financing company to be able to help us afford this, this energy efficiency project. And it will result in essentially replacement of lights across the school district, both interior and exterior lights. And so you have two resolutions. I can let Lauren or Steve talk about the minutia, but you have two resolutions this evening and, and as a board, you need to give them consideration in this order. First of all, the approval of Amaresco as your energy efficiency contractor and operational manager for this project. And second to that, once you approve that, then you're in a position to approve the financing for it. Keep in mind that this is a zero, net zero cost to the district as a result of over about a dozen, dozen years that as a result of Senate Bill 1149, which are your public purpose dollars, current revenue as well as future revenue, in addition to the energy savings from the costs, or from the, from the project will actually result in, it's, I think it's 800, even $800,000 in the black for us as a school district over about 12 or 14 years. So it's, I strongly recommend approval of both resolutions. I believe this is the right thing to do for this school district, especially with the uncertainty about, let's say, any bond measures or anything like that in the future.
Thank you. Go ahead, Lauren.
So pleased to bring this, this project to you, the board, to recap. As you recall, it was months ago that I addressed that we were working on this process, trying to utilize all of these funding sources, SB 1149, Energy Trust of Oregon, as well as energy savings, projected energy savings, so that we could get a lot of the old lighting systems in the district changed. We were also at that time trying to work in some mechanical project. We thought we had a cushion there and we were going to be able to, to try and replace the DDC, the Direct Digital Control System, for the HVAC system at the high school. That is an older system. Unfortunately, it's technology, it was originally put in the heart of a Phase One, so it's over 20 years old. It's operating on a Windows XP computer. And unfortunately, the, the main controller for that system is obsolete. You, you can't get it anymore. Despite all of our efforts, we were not able to make that project fit into this, into this project with the available income stream. It would have required us to allocate a lot of money, like $100,000 a year, and that would even go up after the SB 1149 fund income stream was over, which is in 2026. Subsequently, we pulled that mechanical project out and we sent out the four different interests, or excuse me, estimated escalation rates. So hopefully we had a chance to look at those. That was based on a 3.8% interest rate. When we put out our RFP for the actual loan for this project, we actually came in a lot better, I believe it was 2.92. 2.92, yes, 923. So hopefully you got the updated spreadsheet with that new interest rate. And as you can see, this is, I think, a real win for the district to proceed with all of these lighting upgrades.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys putting some of that extra information together. To remind myself and everybody, the, the estimated cost savings were generated by, by who?
The Amaresco, who is our energy savings performance contractor that we're using, that we're recommending that you approve and go with.
Right, and so I think I heard you say at one point that they're going to guarantee it for the first year and then not past that, or did I misremember that?
Basically, they guarantee it for the first year. Now you can have them come in and do, spend more money to do some energy checks annually to maintain that guarantee. But typically after the first year, you know it's working. Because you're going to see it in the first year, you're going to see that, that energy decrease. So really you're wasting money to have them come in and do a lot of checks after the fact. The only thing that's going to make, you lose that energy savings is increase or escalation in use, so.
So if it turned out they were off by half, they'd make up the difference in year one, what would we do then the next 20 years?
So then I, that's a good question and honestly, I have Mike Pacella with Amaresco here tonight to answer just such questions.
Good evening, Lauren.
Thanks, Mike.
Mike Pacella with Amaresco. So to answer your question, one really easy way to handle that situation is whether you continue the guarantee or not, it's completely up to you. And if that were the case, that you were losing half the savings that we guaranteed, you would just continue with the guarantee and we would pay you every year. Or remedy the situation to get the full energy savings.
Okay. One further question, warranty on these? I mean, it's a 20-year projection, but if we start replacing units in year seven, it's going to cut in significantly to that projection. But is, is it assumed that these are warranted for a set period of time? Does it depend on the fixtures? What's the warranty equivalent?
It does depend on the fixtures and the type of fixtures, but there are some of them that are five-year warranty, but yet their estimated life cycle is much higher than that. So it's, it's hard to get past 10 years. We do have quite a few fixtures that are 10-year warranty, but once again, their estimated life cycle is going to be significantly longer than that. I would anticipate starting to see some replacement after year 15 or in between 10 to 15 years, somewhere in there. But at the same time, we are currently, what you don't see reflected in here is that we currently have light fixtures that are failing everywhere. We still have old T-12 fixtures in most of the old rural schools. We have, even, even the new high school, we have a very high failure rate of Phase One ballast and even Phase Two, we're seeing ballast failures. And some of those are very expensive. So you don't see those numbers, really, there's some maintenance savings factored in here, but it's, it's really minimal.
I just wanted to, I'm sorry, Shelley, I just wanted to clarify, just highlight the differences between the presentation back in November, when we presented the schedule versus today. So obviously Lauren, Lauren highlighted that we're not able to do those mechanical control projects, just, just doesn't pencil out. But the lighting projects, the amount of the projects came in at 1.9, I think we presented 1.8 just for the lighting projects. But the escalation on the schedule in November was at 3% and we ratcheted that back 33% down to 2% to be more conservative and based on some further analysis done by Amaresco. But we also were projecting a 4% interest rate. So at 2.923 plus a little bit of a fee, the true APR is right around 3%. So that's a huge win. It saves about $125,000 in interest, so we felt great about that. In fact, the schedule, the newest schedule that you have here with the 2% escalation rate and the 2.923%, the term is actually 15 years, but we show paying off in 12. So if the energy savings were slightly less, there is a guarantee, but also we, we could take another year to pay it or what have you. But you could see that the, the net effect every year balances out to zero based on an uneven semi-annual payment schedule. So it really works out quite well. And, and just as a reminder, we do have $400,000 sitting in our bank now of Senate Bill 1149 dollars. We receive about $69,000 a year, $5,500 a month or so, varies a little bit from PGE. And this program is guaranteed through 2025, so we'll have, you know, another $470,000, $80,000 coming, which helps in this cash flow scenario as well. So we'll be doing 1.9, a little over 1.9 million dollars in projects. We need to borrow a little over 1.5 and we'll get close to another 500,000 in Senate Bill 1149 dollars through the term of the, of this outlay, so.
Has this been done in other districts?
Absolutely.
And what's the success rate? What's?
Lighting is, we're cut, it always works.
It always works?
Yeah.
Well, you never know. And I have one other question, I lost my train of thought. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought, my apologies.
The only real variable with giving the energy savings in lighting is how long you leave the lights on. So as long as your staff decide to keep doing what they're doing now, it's, yeah, there won't be a problem.
And what is the lighting like? What, I mean, there's lots of different lighting and I, I bought, you know, the, the bulbs for my house, you know, the LEDs, and I did not like them at all. What came, I didn't, I took them out and I put the old ones in. So this is going to affect our children and our schools. And is it optimal for, you know, education and studying and, and just, you know?
So I've been doing a lot of research on this particular subject and it's, it, a lot of it has to do with the color, the Kelvin. So whether you have a daylight spectrum or more, it's more of an orange or more of a bright. There's, a lot of studies have been done and they, they typically tend to show that your brighter, wider light, higher Kelvin, so such as 5,000 plus, tend to make students more alert, they concentrate better, they learn better. There is also a negative aspect to that. If there is negative behavior. If there is, um, negative, um, behavioral issues, they tend to increase the negative behavioral issues too. So probably, uh, there's a couple of different options. We're either looking at possibly putting a different color spectrum in certain classrooms based on the needs for those classrooms. Or the other option is we go with a, a standard lighting, which would be a four thousand kick. And that's pretty much middle of it, or that's pretty much like what most of the existing lighting color is currently.
Okay.
So most of what we have in the district is like thirty-eight to forty-two.
Okay. Because we'll have parents, you know, that go into the classrooms and they'll notice, you know, the volunteers in all of our buildings, and they'll notice the difference and, you know, whether it affects their children in certain ways or not. So I guess the, you know, remains to be seen, so thank you.
Yeah, and like I said, you're welcome to look that up, but there's a lot of research that's been done on this, and so...
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
One more quick one. What about the CRI? Do you know what that's going to be, the color rendering index on these? I know that's, color rendering index, it's been a big deal with LED light bulbs. They started out pretty poor and now they're getting better, but I'm just curious if you've looked into that either.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure, um...
Yeah, it would be on the submittals. I didn't look exactly what they are for this one. I'm, I'm just going to take a stab in the dark, probably in the nineties, but I'd have to look that up.
Yeah, typically, that would be my point, is typically you want them in the nineties at least, and so just something to look at maybe when you're, when you're finalizing things.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you for being resourceful and proactive in your approach.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Does anybody have any other items they'd like to discuss?
Other items, uh, just in general, talking to us?
What's that? Yeah.
Are you talking to the board or...
The board, yes.
Just other items to discuss? This is the time?
Yeah.
Okay. I think I do.
Okay, go for it.
Hold on one second, I've got to get my notes here, if I have them. No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Next up is financial report. Steve Nielsen, take it away.
Thanks, Tom. Uh, so we've got a few new, new reports in here for you. Uh, I've been working on some new formats, infographics, et cetera, to, to give even more information presented in an even more reader-friendly way. I think one of these you've seen before, the two you haven't. So, um, really just want to say, uh, you know, the general fund's still tracking, uh, as we've discussed for the past several months, on, on budget, slightly ahead in the revenue, uh, total revenue, and all the other funds are, are tracking as we anticipated as well. I really wanted, uh, you to be able to, to take a look at the new, uh, the new sheets that I presented and see if you have any, any questions on those about kind of how they're laid out. There's, there's a little bit more, instead of just actual versus budget, there's actual versus budget versus, also versus prior as well, both for, uh, year-to-date through April of last year and, uh, and the, uh, full year-to-date as well, so. And there's also a new, a new, uh, statement there just to compare, uh, I thought it was a good look, this is just general fund, but the cash flow, kind of how that, uh, that works throughout the year and what our high points and low points are. Thought you might find that, uh, helpful as well, so. Some new, new looks.
I like it.
Me too, I appreciate them for the prior.
I like the graphs, the visual.
Pictures are good.
Pictures, I like pictures.
Yes, no, they're, it's, it does help quite a bit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll keep them coming this way.
Yeah.
All right.
Any more questions for Steve? Okay. Next up is Silverton High School. Wade, Principal Laid Wade Lockett.
It won't show up on camera unless you kill it there.
I didn't know Sarah must do that. This building.
We'll, we'll get it figured out here in a moment. It might be right enough if it was right enough for Andy. Well, let Andy.
For those of you that do not know, this is Sarah Roth. She is our, one of our Spanish teachers at the high school. Um, I'm going to be as brief as I possibly can be here this evening for a couple of reasons. One, we've talked a little bit about this stuff in, in November, went over it again briefly, some of this stuff again briefly with the Budget Committee meeting, um, just la, just last week. Uh, and so a lot of this information is going to be kind of rolling back over. I'm just, I'm going to focus on our enrollment, our attendance, hit a few highlights that have already been touched on a little bit this evening. But again, to be respectful of your time and to try and turn this over to, to Sarah to talk about, it's an exciting little endeavor she's been working on over the past year and a half or so. Let her kind of highlight some of that. So currently, right now at the high school, our enrollment is about twelve ninety-six, almost thirteen hundred students. We started the year with about thirteen twenty. Our total attendance percentage is at ninety-two point one percent. That goes through all four grades. And you can see as we kind of work our way down, our largest class is the ninth grade at three hundred and forty-five students. They're also our best attenders. Once we get them to school, if they can't drive, we generally keep them there, it's a good thing. So we generally have better attendance with them. Tenth grade, three hundred and forty-one students, ninety-two point six-three percent attendance. Eleventh grade, two hundred and ninety-eight students. Twelfth grade, three hundred and twelve students. You're looking at about a ninety-one, ninety-two percent attendance rate with them. We do anticipate an incoming freshman class of about two hundred and ninety-seven, which is similar to what we anticipated last year as well. And then we ended up with about three hundred and forty. So, uh, there were a lot of move-ins last year, but when we talk about what we are anticipating, um, you know, coming from our eighth grade, uh, the, the middle school and, and our, our rural schools, uh, we're looking at, at a number of two hundred and ninety-seven. Of our twelve hundred and ninety-six students, eight hundred and eighty of them are ninety-two percent attendance or better, uh, which is roughly seventy percent. I think it's closer to about sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent, but it's almost seventy percent of our students. Um, and we've got ninety-six students that we consider chronic absenteeism, which is less than eighty-two percent or less. Esmeralda Maraz is working on strategies constantly. We get a lot of compliments on the work that she does in getting our students to school. Uh, the most recent one came from the ESD, and, and a gentleman at the ESD had phoned me specifically and said, "We really appreciate the work that she's doing to get your students to school," and some of the initiatives that she's taking to make sure that our attendance rate is where it is right now, ninety-two percent is, is a, is a very good attendance rate. Our graduation rate is above ninety percent, which is a very positive thing. Our forecasting, we just recently finished our forecasting for the next year. This also helped us kind of in how we allocated a lot of our funds. Um, it gave us a, an opportunity to do some, um, analysis of FTE and where we're going to be putting our FTE. Part of this was also, uh, our high school success funds, once known as Measure Ninety-Eight, uh, the high school success funds, and what we, what we could do with those. So next year, we're adding French, we're adding an engineering pathway, culinary pathway, we're adding additional music, um, and we're continuing to expand our work experience opportunities. Some of the things that we have done with our work experience at this point is, we have a full apprentice that's, uh, Kenzie Electric. Um, we've got several students that are working with the YMCA. We've got seven local farms that we are working with in a number of different capacities. DHS, Silverton Fire, Marion County Sheriff's Office. We're expanding those programs as well for work experience for our students. Kirsten Barnes is doing an outstanding job as far as all of that is concerned. And when you have an opportunity to speak with her just casually, um, I would encourage you to, to, to ask about those programs as well because, uh, they're, they're, they're very successful right now. We've come a long way over the last year and with her in that position.
How, how does that work? I mean, I mean, how, how does that work? Is that like an early release and they go, and they go to work?
Some of it's work experience, some of it's early release. It's not necessarily early release. They, they can transcript a grade for their work experience as well.
But it'll be like, it'll be like the, say, the last period or two of the day?
Sometimes, sometimes it's outside of school. Yeah, sometimes it's, it's internships outside of school as well.
Okay.
So it just, it depends on, on how it's set up. And she's, she's kind of custom, customizing that for each student that's, that's interested in doing that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so when a, when a student goes out for one of these, is it just for an hour or two, or is it for four or five hours?
Again, that's, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's, it's individualized per student and, and the program and what, um, you know, what the YMCA needs versus what our students are looking for as far as that work experience is concerned.
And so are those options in the curriculum guide?
So the work, work experience is something that is in, yeah, is represented there.
Okay, great.
Um, now, what that work experience looks like, they would, they would talk to Kirsten.
It's individualized, right.
Right.
But when you look in the curriculum guide, it, it, you can look at that and go, oh, work experience, or you can sign up for that. Right, right?
Generally, I don't know if you necessarily would sign up for it. You wouldn't sign up for it because then it's...
Or put on your forecast sheet?
You could forecast for it.
Okay.
And Kirsten could then work with you on what, what exactly it is we're looking for.
Okay, got it.
And what we're trying to do.
Very good.
So, yeah, we have a lot of fast food programs that we're working with as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's...
Great.
Yeah. It's a good experience for our students, yeah.
Thanks for the clarification, yeah, it is.
That's great.
Um, right now, we are kind of in the middle of our end-of-year rush. There's a lot of, uh, activities going on. Um, I included the newsletter for you right there behind the agenda, uh, because it gives you an opportunity to kind of see what we're putting out once, about once a month right now. If we can get it out every two or three weeks, we're trying to, uh, but it's a pretty good opportunity for our parents to see some of the things, the activities that are going on, um, the successes, uh, just kind of an informative newsletter that we're sending out to our parents. Right now, it's being posted to the website and it's being sent out. Um, I would love the opportunity to be able to send it out to as many people as we can get it out to because we are excited just about being, being able to have the opportunity to communicate with the community, with parents, with the board, whoever wants to be communicated with, really. Some of the things that, uh, some of our students kind of already hit on, um, some of the successes, and I, I wish they would have been emphasized a little bit more, but we're sending twenty students to national competitions over the summer, um, whether it be through speech and debate, uh, through our protective services, um, FBI, Skills USA, these sorts of, but to, to three different areas around the United States for our students to represent this school and this community, um, in national competitions based on the success in their state competitions. And that's something we take a lot of pride in. Uh, last year, we sent eight students, and this year, we're, we're sending twenty, um, which is a big deal. And, and I think that needs to be made aware of. Now, also, if you look in the newsletter, you'll see specifically who those students are and what programs they are in, so I would, I would encourage you to take a look at that. One of the things that, you know, personally, I'm very proud of, there's, we have no, at this point, as far as we know, no teacher turnover for next year. The teachers that we have on staff right now are going to be the teachers that we have on staff in the fall. As far as we know at this point right now, nobody's made any indication, and, um, we, we haven't had any, um, anything that's come up that anybody said, "I'm kind of interested in this, I'm looking here, I'm looking there." As far as we know at this point right now, there's no teacher turnover, uh, going into the fall, which is exciting.
Wow.
It's exciting. And I think that's good for the students.
Yeah.
It's good for the culture. I think there's, there's a lot of great things that happened just with having no turnover, that kind of consistency. They did bring up that we sent twenty-four students to the Caesar Chavez Youth Leadership Conference at Western Oregon on May third. I was able to go to that conference as well and see what it does for our students. That's an impact, that's an impactful conference. Um, I was very excited to be there and see some of the workshops they're working on, some of the ways that they are, uh, that conference kind of leads our, our, our students into the future, and specifically our, our Hispanic students, Spanish-speaking students. And it was, it was a fun, fun conference to be at. I learned a lot personally, that's kind of one of my own personal highlights, but I think our students, um, got a lot out of that conference as well. Little bit of discussion about music a little bit earlier tonight. Uh, you know, I would highly recommend that if you want to see the best music in the state, go to our Fire Concert and Band Concert next week. Um, our, our concert choir, uh, they mentioned was already, already mentioned was two-time state champions. Our band, um, I was a little bit surprised that they didn't play higher than seventh, by honesty. I was out there and watched, and I, I felt like they, I felt like they were right there. I felt like they were in the thick of it. But it's, uh, it's impressive to watch, and I think our, our music instructors, band and choir do an outstanding job, um, and they're fun to watch. Last thing that I want to bring up, and I'm just going to turn this over to Sarah at this point, to talk about our Seal of Biliteracy. Um, this is a project that Sarah's been working on for the past year and a half, year and a half or so?
Sure.
I'm sure? Okay. Um, but I'm going to kind of turn it over to you just to, to talk about the, the success that we had from year one to year two, just the gains that were made as far as that was concerned. Before I do that, are there any questions for me? Because, yeah, please.
I have a question about, um, number three B. Are all of those things that you listed, um, part of the high school success fund plan?
Yes, yes, they are. Yeah.
Wade, I just want to say congratulations and hats off to you and your staff down there because this is an awesome report, and I know there's great things happening at the high school. And I know there's, the last few years, there's been some, you know, some, a few growing pains and some changes and things like that, but you guys have pulled it together and turned it around, and it's, I'm very impressed.
I think, I think there's a lot to be said for a very strong staff.
Yes.
And I think there's a lot to be said for, uh, very good students, and that's a conversation that we have over and over and over again. I don't think you'll find better students. I don't think you'll find better students in the state of Oregon. I really don't. I think you're going to be really excited to be here.
I would agree with that. I would agree with that, a hundred percent.
It's, we, we were sitting at prom on Saturday night watching our kids, and that was, that was the conversation. We have amazing students, and we've got amazing teachers and amazing staff that come out and, and guide those students and supervise, be a part of all of that, they're part of those kids' lives, and I, I think it's, um, I think it's a big deal. So I, I appreciate that comment. I think it's a great representation of our, of our students, of our staff and our community.
And your comment about this, about our students is true. That happens when our kids go to state competition, and people who are working as an usher come up and say, "You have the best kids, they are more well-behaved than any, any other school that's been at this place."
And they're right. And they're right.
Yeah. And that comes from hard work by the staff and just good kids, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure, please.
Um, uh, number one, G, you have nearly seventy percent...
Yep.
Eight or ninety students at ninety-two percent or better of attendance. What, what's the definition of attendance? What constitutes, you know?
It's...
You do know what I mean? Is it, is it, you have to be a school...
Respectfully, it's butts in seats, that's what it is. It's butts in seats. I mean, that's what it is.
Well, yeah, but for, like, the first five periods? Or is it, I mean...
So that, that attendance is taken over seven, so however many periods that you are there for the school day, that's, it's taken for each period?
Okay.
Is that, did that, I almost wanted to answer a question.
Okay, well, so I guess my question is, so when I look on, um, you know, Wozel Grade Book, um, in Pinnacle, and my daughter has all these red squares because she's been absent for track.
Okay.
Do you take that percentage into account that she's gone for a track or a sport?
There's...
When kids have to leave, like, for maybe sixth and seventh period? Or how, how do you constitute the percentage?
That would be like an excused absence or a, a, um, school activity, something along That would be like an excused absence or a, a, a school activity, something along those lines.
Right.
It's not just unexcused absences that are counted against your attendance, though.
Okay, okay, that's, I think maybe that's what I'm getting at.
And I, I'm not going to have, I'm not going to be able to answer your question specifically right there, I would have to talk to who's coding our attendance.
Okay.
And specifically how it is coded, I know the state of Oregon, there are six different areas that are an excused absence, or can be an excuse, you know, excuse for an absence.
Right.
But I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what the, what exactly those are.
Okay.
But this, this is specifically about people being at school in the seats.
In their seats, okay, okay, okay. That's good, we can talk about that a little numbers later, whatever. Okay, the second one is, is because you have implemented this year Kirsten Barnes to have kids go out and be a part of companies and, and working there. Are we going to be able to get data on kids who maybe normally you'd have a hard time keeping in the school, that are now staying in school because of this new program?
That is a great question. Yes is the answer.
Okay.
I, I...
And you might not have data yet, I'm just saying, in the year you're keeping data.
What I would like to do is, next year, when we give our first board report, be able to have that conversation and bring that piece of, piece of data up.
Yeah, that'll be really interesting.
I'm going to rely on you to remind me about that.
I will remind you. I'm certain I won't forget.
I appreciate that.
No, that would be great, I'm looking forward to that data, actually, because that hands-on training, I mean, kids even at that age love hands-on training, they love to do it.
It's going to keep students in school.
Yeah, and so, and to earn that graduation rate to get higher and higher, and our kids to be successful, so it's a great program. Okay, and then I have one other really quick question in your newsletter. I wanted to say thank you for the newsletter.
Sure.
I get it every month, because I have high school students. It's very simple, it's to the point, there's not a lot of graphics and all kinds of stuff going on, and it's really informative with every dates, and, and you're just telling us what's happening, and it's in, so the format is really nice, and I appreciate that.
I'm going to pass that along to Melissa King, because she's the person who actually creates this.
Okay, that would be great.
So I will do that for her.
Yeah, please do, because it really is, kudos to her, yeah, it's just right there and we're ready to go.
Thank you, I will let her know.
That's it, I'll email you about Madeline's.
Please do.
Thank you.
Ron, it looked like you were about to say something before I turned this over to Sarah.
Just real quick.
Sure.
Yeah, so I want to go back to the attendance, and I'm assuming that the typical progression, starting from ninth grade to 12, ninth graders always have the strongest attendance, and it trickles down slowly down to your senior year. Okay, and that's probably never changed, right?
Well, I, I don't know if it's ever changed, if I'm, if I remember my high school years, that's kind of the way I remember it. You know, it's, there's, there's a lot of freedom in a driver's license, and by the time you get that nice weather in May, second semester, senior year, you know, I think that, that tends to happen.
Sure.
We don't encourage it, we do the best we can to keep them in their seats, but, but it does happen, it is a reality.
Once they get that college acceptance letter.
But you also have kids going to apprentice, I mean, you have kids going to the hospital to do programs and, you know, help out, and, yeah, so is that taken into consideration?
No, that's part of their classes, yeah, that's part of their classes.
Oh, okay, okay, got it, okay, I just wanted to piggyback on that.
And then one comment I wanted to make is, you know, I know that when we look at student success, we look at school's success, we're always looking for the numbers, we're reaching for, you know, the numbers, the data. But for me, what really sticks out is when it said there's no teacher turnover. I mean, that's huge, I mean, that really speaks to the leadership of the high school and within the district itself, so, you know, kudos to you and congratulations on that.
I, I appreciate that, I do. Thank you. At this point, I would like to turn this over to Sarah, talk about our Seal of Bili literacy. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Talk about what it is.
Yeah, I do have a handout for you with a little bit of data that I'll give to you after my presentation, but this doesn't quite fit.
Adjust it on the lens.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. So the Seal of Bili literacy is something that is offered by 36 states and Washington DC, and is being offered more and more throughout schools and school districts in Oregon. And it basically is, if a student is proficient and can demonstrate that in a language other than English, as well as English and meet graduation requirements, they can earn what's called their Seal of Bili literacy. And to prove they're proficient at this other language is at a very high level. So, the Seal of Bili literacy, I'll get to like what they actually get, but it's basically that you have a high proficiency level in a language other than English, as well as English skills. So, this year, we offered a language assessment to all students who were interested and who thought they had, we went through a lot of prep with them to give them the idea of what they would need to do in order to meet this expectation. But we offered a language assessment. It was a, a test through ACTFOL, which is the National Council on Languages, and there were four parts on that, they had to demonstrate that they could read, write, speak and listen at a high level on a language assessment. In order to earn the seal, they must demonstrate that they are at least intermediate high in all four parts, so they must demonstrate an intermediate high level in reading, writing, speaking and listening, which is not something that students generally achieve after four years of studying a language. This is a very high level that some of our students at the high school haven't achieved in their first language, much less two languages. So, this was, these are very high expectations. We tested students in three different languages, most of the students tested in Spanish. We had two students test in Russian and one student test in Chinese. And 69% of the students met or exceeded on the assessment. We had 36 of the 52 students that we tested meet or exceed on the four parts. And all the students who met or exceeded, met or exceeded in Spanish, and every single student also studied in our language program at the high school. So I'll repeat that no one met the, met the language expectations if they didn't study language as well as maybe. Some students do speak Spanish at home who met it, some students just did that in our program, some students went to emergent school and then moved into our program. We had a wide variety, but every single student studied in our program at Silverton High School. And all except for one studied in the advanced levels, only one of our students only went through two years of Spanish. So we were very proud of that in our language department, that we helped those students achieve that high level of language proficiency. So the students who will earn their seal will get a Seal of Bili literacy from the state of Oregon, it'll be affixed to their diploma. And they will also have this achievement documented on their transcript, which is a really big important part. We will recognize them at senior awards night and award them with a medallion that they'll wear at graduation. And the students who were not seniors this year, who also met the expectations, once they meet the graduation requirements and their essential skills, they will receive that their senior year. So the benefits to earning the Seal of Bili literacy are to encourage our students to study languages, to honor multiple cultures and languages in our community, provide universities with a method to recognize proficiency and give credit, and provide employers with a method of identifying people with Bili literacy skills, to prepare students with 21st century skills that will benefit them in our global society, and recognize the value of language diversity in our community.
So, but I think it's also important to note that, how many do we have, we started this last year?
Yes, the ELD department tested three, four students last year, and three of the students earned the seal. One of the students had moved that year from, like, they'd just immigrated that year who met it, and two of our students were two of our Ford Scholar recipients who also studied through Spanish IV and came from Spanish-speaking homes in our community. And so they kind of piloted this last year with those four students. So this year, we opened it up to anyone who was interested.
I think this is a lot for our language department that we went from three students to 36 students in one year, too.
Yeah.
So do they have to take the ACTFOL in English as well?
So the English skills are proven through their essential skills that they have to meet for graduation.
Thank you.
So I only dealt with the other, language other than English, and helping the students meet those proficiency levels.
Great accomplishment.
Thank you.
It is really good.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
That's all? Thanks for our talk.
That's it? Okay, next up is Mark Hannan, tell us about Silvercrest School and the district programs he oversees.
Said he was going to be brief, right? Good evening, folks. I'll begin tonight by addressing my district responsibilities, beginning with nursing services. We currently still employ three nurses for the district by contracting with Silverton Legacy Medical. However, we have included additional nursing time, I know I shared that with you in the fall, that that was something that we were hoping that we would be able to do in this budget cycle, and I actually received an email from Dana Peterson today that we will be increasing our nursing time, which will be to either our current nurse's schedule or an additional part-time nurse or a combination of both. The intention of the additional time would be to address the needs of the rural schools along with trying to meet the increasing needs of our medically fragile students. Onto ELD services, it was really good to see the Bili literacy presentation, that was something that Kirsten Jank last, last year had, had brought to my attention, and we reached out to the high school and they ran with it, so it's really cool to see that. We currently have 147 ELL students throughout the district. As you may recall, our district went through a desk monitoring process last fall, which means we provide documentation to ODE for our forms, processes and procedures. We received feedback from ODE regarding additional documentation needed and have since provided that documentation and are awaiting final approval. Again, want, again want to give special recognition to Lori Wire, who did the lion's share of the work preparing the documents for the monitoring process. Lori is an ELD teacher for the district, but a portion of her FTE is in ELD program support, and she put in a lot of time and effort into that project. Since my last report, myself and a contingent of ELD teachers and assistants from the district attended the state ELD conference in Eugene. We pay for this conference along with our Imagine Learning computer program out of Title III funds. The ELD conference provides me with updates regarding our legal obligations to meet the needs of our second language learners, while it also provides our district team with a valuable professional development opportunity. I was also able to visit ELD classrooms throughout the district this year and was able to see in person students utilizing the Imagine Learning program I previously mentioned, and this program has been enthusiastically utilized by our students and teachers alike. Onto migrant services, we currently have 66 migrant students district-wide. We're working on gathering numbers for migrant summer school participation. We will again hold migrant summer school concurrently with Measure 98 Summer School at Silverton High School, and as usual, will provide breakfast and lunch for our migrant students at no cost to the families. Homeless services, we currently have identified 69 students district-wide that qualify under the McKinney-Vento Act, which means they receive services for being homeless. I continue to attend a monthly advisory meeting that is a collaboration of Silverton stakeholders discussing how to, to support the homeless in Silverton. We have better, we have begun discussions with Silverton Area Community Aid regarding how to better coordinate their services with the students and, and the families in our district. So stay tuned for more on that in, in the future. The mentor program, there are still remain 30 first or second-year teachers currently finishing up this year's mentor program between Silver Falls and Mount Angel School Districts respectively. You may recall that five of the 30 teachers are from Mount Angel. These new-to-the-profession teachers just met this afternoon, as a matter of fact, and have one remaining meeting left in the school year. You may recall that we have been rotating our meeting venues throughout the district in Mount Angel. Each meeting began with the principal of the host in school describing what makes their, their school unique to the district and what challenges they face. I personally found this to be meaningful as we provide these new teachers insight into the unique qualities of the school in our district and Mount Angel. The ultimate goal of the program is to provide support to new teachers in order to retain them in the teaching profession. Onto Silvercrest. We currently have 136 Silvercrest students, which is down from 145 last year. However, I am cautiously optimistic that by this time next year, I'll be reporting to a number higher than that and hopefully significantly higher. An additional .67 teacher to split our 3-4 blend into individual classes is on Mr. Blando's add-back list, and I'm very grateful for that. By splitting this blend, we hope to be able to take more students in our K-2 classrooms in order to help our school grow and to help offset overcrowding in town. The intention is to provide a part-time teacher to teach reading, writing and math in individual classrooms, then combining the two classes for science and PE where we can accommodate larger class size. As you've heard for several years now, we measure our students on a growth model through STAR, with each teacher striving to get 100% of their students to grow at least one year in reading and one year in math. On the student growth percentile scale, one year is, of growth is the 50th percentile. What I've provided you is the Silvercrest median for our SGP in reading and math. You will note that both the reading and math median SGPs are exactly 50 for Silvercrest, which I think is statistically almost impossible, but it happens, so. The vertical scale indicates the, the percentage of students that are proficient with respect to our standards. So the goal is for that blue dot to be as far as possible in the upper right-hand corner. These graphs show we're on the right track, but clearly we still have some work to do. Back in the fall, I began my Silvercrest report with a thank you for adding counseling services to the rural schools. For those of you that attended or watched the Budget Committee meeting, you know that these services would otherwise not be provided due to my budget constraints. I also recognize the many needs in our district and a finite amount of money, but this shows the importance you placed on the mental health of our students, and I thank you again. I'd like to invite Paula Cross Up, who is our counselor at Silvercrest Evergreen and Scotts Mills. Paula currently spends Tuesdays and Thursdays at Silvercrest. Paula is going to briefly share with you what she does and the importance we place on her services in our building, but before she begins, are there any questions regarding special services or Silvercrest?
Yeah, one quick one, you know, that add-back to the .67 or 2/30 teacher order. How many students would it take to just be able to have enough money to basically have a full-time split out of those classes? Are you, I mean, you're talking about trying to grow back by splitting that class, but if you had, say, 20 more, I mean, how many, what's the magic number for you?
What's the ADM rate going for these days, 7,000?
No, it's 85-ish.
Oh. So, for every, for every kid, $8,500, and a teacher is 102.5.
So you're like a 12, 13 kids, yeah.
Yeah, so the intention is to increase those, those lower grades where we can exceed, you know, 15 kids, because when we combine 15 and 15, we have 30, if we can increase those to 22, 23, take seven to class, that's, that adds up quickly.
Great, no, I think that'd be great, I just thought.
Yep.
You know, Mark, we talked about Silvercrest having some capacity to bring on more students. Is there a plan materializing that maybe, and in fact, I've heard, mentioned this before, where we can talk about maybe transporting them from the downtown area to your school and back directly?
We are doing it as we speak.
So that's going to happen?
Yeah, it, that is happening, and I appreciate Ms. Stevens and Mr. Blando helping make that happen this year. We have two stops, actually, one at Robert Frost and one off the end of Pioneer. So that opens up that large neighborhood, which is literally 12 minutes door-to-door from that bus stop to our front door.
Thanks.
Awesome, thanks.
Paula.
Okay, hi. First of all, thank you for your service, you're, I think I'm a familiar face to many of you. If I'm not, I've been in education for 30 years, and half of the 20, 22 of those years have been for the Silver Falls School District, and we do have the best kids here, so, but they've been good years. I want to share a little bit of what I do in my new position as a counselor in three of our K-8 schools. I teach classes and facilitate groups. I do some individual brief solution-focused counseling, collaborate with teachers, administration and parents for student success. Managing 504 plans and participating or facilitating care teams is another one of the hats I wear. I am every student's counselor in the building where I work, so it's important that I'm a familiar face. It's exciting that I'll have the opportunity to work with students from the time they enter kindergarten until they leave us in eighth grade. I strive to build a trusting relationship with students, staff and parents, so that I can be someone they feel comfortable coming to and can be help if something unexpected or unfortunate happens in their lives. I do spend regular days at schools, but there have been times where I've been called to the other schools because of things that were happening with students. I was glad to be able to support them. I've seen over 140 students in my offices this year between Evergreen, Scotts Mills and Silvercrest, and presently I see 68 students weekly, either in small groups or individually. The size depends on the age and the focus skill that we're working on. Middle school students have up to six in a group, but with some of the younger students, especially those working on attending and focus skills, I might work with two or three at a time. The groups are designed to teach skills that will help students be more... The groups are designed to teach skills that will help students be more successful in the classroom, in social situations and in their community. Um, these are students who are often struggling in the classroom with social, emotional skills that they need to access their education. Um, they're referred by teachers, parents, administration, and some have self-referred this year. Um, some of the common focuses are self-regulation, responsible decision-making, organization and time management, social and self-awareness, conflict and anger management and self-care. I serve on each of the three, um, schools' care team and facilitate the one at Scotts Mills. Our care teams are in place to help students who are struggling and need a little extra help. So when a student is first brought to the team that has specialists, teachers and classified staff, um, we put a plan in place to give students extra support. Um, these interventions are, um, monitored, and if they're still struggling, we, um, the care team is where students are referred for special education services and five oh four plans. I'm responsible for scheduling meetings, tracking, uh, tracking action plans and making sure we have the proper steps and paperwork for students who are referred on pre-evaluations. Some of the students I see are on five oh four plans. A five oh four plan allows a student with a medical diagnosis such as ADHD, anxiety disorders, diabetes, autoimmune disorders, um, to be successful in the classroom by building accommodations for them. I'm the case manager for all this five oh four students in the three buildings. Um, and this role includes facilitating the evaluation process per student. Um, if a student is found eligible, a plan is written, um, with a team of people including medical professionals, teachers, parents, administration, and sometimes a student. Annual meetings are held in order to update the five oh four, and students are monitored throughout the year to ensure that the plan is being followed and that their needs are being met. I teach a variety of different lessons in the classroom, and I like that time because I get to know all their names and they get to know my face a little bit better. Many of the lessons that I teach meet the requirements of SB eight fifty-six, also known as Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law is required by the state, um, and each district needs to implement a K-12 child sexual abuse prevention program. By the end of the year, I will have taught between forty-eight lessons in each of the classrooms where the, in the buildings I work. The lessons give students safety tools that they can use in any situation where they feel unsafe, scared, uncomfortable or in need of help. The lessons focus on personal boundaries, learning to recognize unsafe situations, using your voice, communicating to trusted adults and asking for help. The lessons are very age-appropriate and teach the skills without exposing students to unnecessary materials. I also spend time in classrooms that need targeted lessons, um, in school readiness skills or behaviors that those students are struggling with. Other prevention measures, I am responsible for conducting threat assessments, suicide risk assessments and SERCS, which are Sexual Incident Response Committees. Um, and I also implement and monitor safety plans based on the outcomes of those assessments. Um, last summer, I got to teach summer school and work with kids on the high school readiness skills. So knowing the students and knowing what summer school has to offer, I was able to call parents and talk to them about specifically what we can do for their child in summer school. And therefore, I have quite a few kids enrolled for summer school. So, um, this is a little bit of my days of, at Silvercrest. And again, thank you for hearing me and for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, Paula.
Thank you.
I've heard many times what an awesome job you're doing and
Oh, thank you.
Have a, the only thing I, the only thing that I hear is that, and one of the major things I hear is how, what a great job you're doing and what, how much you're helping kids, and people just wish there were more of you to do, to do. We could keep her full-time at Silvercrest easily. I've heard that from every school that she works. Well, I have dibs. I've already called dibs, so. No, thank you. Important work, thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. All right. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is board reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
Yeah, just real quick. I went to the, um, district retirement dessert last week and, um, pardon?
You went to it at your place.
I went to it at my place, yeah. Whatever.
Sure helps.
Yeah. I walked across the field. But, um, no, Danny, how many years, do you remember how many years you said were of the combined?
Um, over a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, it was over a hundred and fifty of the retirees.
Seven people we recognized.
And seven people over a hundred and fifty years, and the majority of those years have been in this district. And I just wanted to say that that is a really special thing, to have people who stay so long. And another really special thing is to have administrators, our superintendent and assistant superintendent, be able to go and talk to each one of those, at that, at the event, go and talk to each one of those people personally, knowing the work they've done, knowing those people personally. I don't think that happens everywhere. And this is a special district. I just wanted to, this is a good place. I just wanted to say that, so.
Thank you, Tim, for representing us.
You know, if I can piggyback on
Wrong with it.
It's okay. I piggyback on Tim's comments. I, there's really nothing more I can add than what he said. It was a fantastic event, though. Just what I really, uh, the takeaway for me was when the teachers got up to share, share a few words about their experience, you know, within their career and their district, and just, uh, for me, it was very humbling to hear the, you know, what they've done and then how valuable they have been to the community. Um, and that was just fantastic, participate with that. And then I do want to say, maybe just a, a shout-out to Tim. Tim, uh, and his, uh, family donated facilities in which the, the event took place. And so if you've ever been there, you wonder how beautiful of a place it was. So, Tim, thank you very much for doing that. It's, that was fantastic.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. Anybody else? Okay. We'll move on to the second public comment, uh, period. This is limited, limited to discussion and action items. Chuck.
Good evening. I'm Chuck Shakatoff. I live here in Silverton on Telecom Drive, and I filled out the form in the back. So I was one of the people who complained about the new procedure that was announced at the early March meeting about types of public comment not allowed at a public comment period. And, um, I do believe that, um, it's pretty well-established that music is a form of free expression, has a right of free expression. And I don't believe this board, as a government entity, can, can, can regulate that. Um, you can regulate time, place and manner. I can say the word fire in a theater, but I can't yell it. I can, I could sing comments to you, but you don't want to hear me sing, I can assure you. But I can't do them too loud. I couldn't do them too loud. And so that was the problem. It was, it was exacerbated by, because in the back of the room at every meeting, you have your proceed, your policy says, "We encourage public comment at board meetings," at these meetings which are pub, which are public meetings. There's a majority of you here that makes it a public meeting. The policy, which was apparently revised or re-approved in early twenty nineteen, is, is usually read or paraphrased by the chair at the beginning of, at the beginning of the comment period. At that meeting, the acting chair added a paragraph saying, "No mu, we, we're not gonna allow music during this public comment period." It's a form of public comment. If someone wanted a STEM program and felt more comfortable singing about it than talking about it, they should be allowed to do that. It doesn't matter what the subject matter is or whatever. They should be allowed to express themselves through music. That's how some people are. And so I think you're, it's a, you have two issues before you. One, how did, what's the role of the chair in changing the procedures in a meeting? It was a surprise to at least one board member. And what's, and what's the, um, what can be stopped? What type of comment can you regulate at, at this comment period? This one and one at the beginning of the meeting? And you're limited. You're limited what you can do by time, place and manner. You have to have a legitimate public purpose to, to restrict it. And I don't think saying, um, "It's a waste of time" or "It's inefficient" is a legitimate public purpose when someone stays within the three minutes. You can ask people to stay within the three minutes, whether it's a song or, or music or whatever. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, moving on. Um, action items. First one is to, um, adopt the, how do I say that? Mifflin-Hart Court has a district social studies curriculum effective two thousand nineteen and twenty school year. Is that a motion?
So moved.
Oh. I was just gonna say it, but I didn't know.
Okay, go ahead.
I didn't know how to pronounce it. Is it Hooton? Hooton, Miss Houston? All right. No, you already moved it. That's fine. A second, that's fine. I'm just behind.
Okay. Who moved it? Who is, who made the motion?
I did.
I think Tim made it.
Tim did? Who had the second?
I didn't, but somebody said, I'll second it if it had.
We have, okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Um, next one is to approve the two thousand and nineteen, twenty district long-range facility planning committee roster.
I move to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty district long-range facility planning committee roster.
Okay, got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, now we're going to adjourn to executive set, executive session under ORS one nine two six six zero two F to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, sick leave bank request and superintendent evaluation. Thanks for coming. Okay, let's, uh, return to, oh, regular open session. Uh, do I have, do I have a motion on the sick leave bank request?
I move we approve a sick leave bank for LeAnn Harley in the amount of twenty-five days.
A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, uh, all in favors, please sign, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you much. Meeting adjourned.